So, that's what we'll deal with today is no sleep from baby, not well, not well, kicked in the head.
Birthday.
Birthday.
That's a good thing.
Is that a thing even now, right?
Not anymore.
We just seem fine.
I'm great in light of everything else, I'm great now.
We need to define, fine.
Alrighty, alrighty.
I've upgraded my status to great.
Okay, for those of you who hate process and love product, you'll be very happy to know that we're not, no more processes, alright? We are jumping into content today. Okay, so, just remind, so we've got Feb 13th, March 6th, and March 13th, I believe, are the next two dates, right? In your package there, you've got a hand up that has two things for you, the slides to refer to for today, and I also printed out your, the page from the May retreat summaries that has your prioritized goals, what you said about them, your vision goals, and also the critical success factors. You're gonna definitely wanna refer to those today when you're goal setting, okay? So here's what I think I heard are the outcomes between now and the 13th. You're gonna identify, I guessed at this, you give me your feedback, I'm saying one to two goals for each of these priorities. Does that make sense? I was thinking and planned on, were you thinking more than one or two goals over the three years, or were you thinking one or two goals? Is that enough to think about, I guess is what I'm asking you?
So what do you mean, well, how are you defining goals?
Okay, it's that, okay. But what that means is, I was just thinking, even though you're doing a three-year plan, you don't wanna get yourselves into a situation where you've got five, five goals, right, that are competing for your top five goals, five goals, right? Because then you get into that situation again where if every goal is a priority, then nothing is gonna be your priority. But we can see how it goes when you do your brainstorming, alright? But I was thinking maybe two goals for each of these and you'd be doing pretty well, okay? Achieving before you're over, and you wanna start again, you'll know the process for two of them, okay? Alright. And then, the other thing we wanna do by March 13th is you wanna articulate your broad strategies and a general approach for each of the goals that you come up with. You could potentially have six goals when we get done. Sound good?
Yes.
And we're gonna get more, just stop. Okay, you've got your identities on the back of your name tags for your small group work, and we are gonna be doing that. I know you've rebuffed that idea in the past, but I think we will be doing it today, okay? So especially get your, get your duo and trio partner, just remind me, Rita, who are you?
I am Tomato and Freezing Rain.
Okay, so you're Tomato, you're working with Bacon and Lettuce?
Bacon.
Lenny and Jason.
Lettuce.
Okay, somebody Spaghetti and Meatballs, I know.
I'm Spaghetti.
Spaghetti and Meatballs or two, and Jim and Dawn, it must be you then, right?
Matt and Dawn.
Bonnie and Clyde. What have we got?
Bonnie and Clyde and I'm Summer.
Oh, okay. Alright, so you've got those. Rules of engagement, I'm gonna skip if that's okay? You all know the ground rules that we have set for ourselves, so I don't think I need to do too much on that. Again, it's the work we did in May that is the foundation that got you here. So those visions, those values, and the critical success factors that you identified, now you're gonna use them as you begin to set goals for yourself, okay? Everyone have a chance to review that?
I already did.
You've got that in front of you today. Alright, so here's what I thought we would do today. First of all, I just wanna review what is a SMART goal? What's a specific? How many of you have used that acronym before for setting goals? Chuck, you have?
Yeah.
Rita? Okay, I will go over those, alright? So that you understand what we mean by a SMART goal. We're gonna use that brainstorming technique that we did at Envision, remember when we got together and we did our sticky notes, and then we went up and put stars on our sticky notes to prioritize? I thought we would do that same process today for choosing goals, guessing that you all may come up with three or four, and then you're gonna have to prioritize to choose, okay? And then we're gonna spend some time SMARTing them, okay? Making them specific, measurable, achievable, and all of that. Okay, sound like a good plan? My idea is to try to get through two of these priorities today, to set goals for two, if we can, alright? Again, timeframes I only guess at, I have no idea, okay? And so then, if we are successful today in doing the goals for two out of three of these, on March 5th, we can finish the third priority. And then, the other thing I wanted to you out for is that on March 6th, I think a good way to think about how you begin to get to broad strategies is to think about first, everything that could possibly go wrong, right? If this is my goal, what are all the potential obstacles that I might face? Those are really good, it's a good impetus for coming up with, so then we probably need to do this as a broad strategy, right? So for example, if buy-in or lack of buy-in, as you've all talked about a million times, is gonna be a potential obstacle to any one of your goals, then a broad strategy might be, I'm making this up as I go, form a coalition, right, of a task force with multidisciplinary or, you know, with representing different folks with whom you're concerned about buy-in. You see what I mean? Also, Jim, your question last time about what's the difference between a broad strategy and a goal, that would be an example. You know, you've set your goal, but one of the broad strategies, maybe we need to form this task force, so that we've got buy-in and communication all the way. Make sense? It's not as specific as an action step yet. Okay, so I thought we would do that on March 6th, and then on March 13th, we'll do the broad strategies for all three, okay? Now, March 6th, again, we may be ahead of ourselves, we've allowed plenty of time for this, we may get into broad strategies on March 6th, and in fact, that's great, time bound, on March 16th. You did wanna spend some time identifying any data, research needs that you might wanna do before going to those more specific strategies, Dawn, that Dawn talked about. And then I also wanted to leave a little bit of time for the transition, that'll be my last day with you for now, and Chuck and Jenna, I think will be taking over as co-facilitators. Chuck, do you know anybody in the room?
Mm-hmm.
You do, okay, great, so now you can do a quick round. Okay. So SMART goals are, that acronym stands for specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, and time-bound, alright? I'm sorry to explain each of those to you. Okay. So who's done this before? Chuck, you said you have, anybody here? Rita, have you done that?
Not very formally, but yeah.
Okay, so what's your sense of so specific? When you say make sure your goal is specific?
There would maybe be numbers involved, or you just, you would know what the next step is.
Yeah. Yeah, it states.
Clear.
It means that it has to state exactly what you want to do, right? So, I can use an example, a personal example, so if I say I wanna lose weight, is that a goal? I wanna lose weight.
Yeah.
Yep, really? I wanna lose weight.
It's not a goal, is it?
How will I know? How will I know?
Much in measure.
It's not a good goal.
I wanna lose 10 pounds.
Yeah, how about this, I wanna lose 50 pounds by next Sunday.
Not time, right? Not achievable.
Yeah, so, so in other words, if there's no deadline attached to it, and there's no, it has to state exactly what you wish, and you actually came up with an example, I can't remember the details of it.
Build 100 houses.
Yeah, so if you say I wanna increase the amount of affordable housing on Nantucket, that's a wish, right? You all have been wishing that for 20 years, right? From everything I've heard and all the feedback. The goal, we will increase the number of affordable housing units, defined, right, however you do, and I'm not suggesting this as a goal, I'm just going by what I heard you say as an example, from X, your baseline number, to Y, whatever your finish number is, and then by a certain date, okay? So that's what I mean, as specific as possible, exactly what it is that you wanna do.
Then how would that be different than, we wanna reach our 10% shy subsidized housing inventory in three years, different than we wanna build 100, like, 100 units of affordable housing may meet the shy? So would they be almost the same?
Is it okay if I let you hash that out while you're actually SMARTing the goals?
Sure.
Okay? Is that alright, Greg? Okay, because content-wise, I don't, I don't know the answer to that question, but you will when you brainstorm your goals. Is that alright?
Yeah, great.
Alright, so that's specific. Measurable, obviously, we've talked about this before in here, what, and I know Matt loves this, what gets measured gets done, you know that, right? Okay, so again, if I'm not getting on that scale every day, I have no idea, right? Yeah. Establish a baseline and measure progress from there, we talked about that. And again, these will look very different depending on the content and the nature of the goal that you're identifying, alright? But basically, as Rita talks about all the time too, is you wanna choose and understand what your metrics are for, in three years from May, knowing if you got there or not. Good? Jason, I'm gonna just understand that your face is not necessarily an indication of, you look tired, is all I'm saying.
That's what he looks.
Are you okay?
Yeah.
Alright, so far so good?
Yeah.
The A stands for achievable, obviously, and that means I'm not gonna lose 50 pounds by Sunday, or in three months, or probably even in six months, okay? So you wanna make sure that the goals are stretching you, but that they're also balanced and reasonable, that you think they're doable. Remember last time you stated how important it was to you to always have that reality check? When you SMART your goals, you'll make sure, is this even doable? Okay? Relevant, obviously relevant, in line with your vision and values, relevant to the needs of your constituents, and again, just wanted to remind you that your goals are gonna serve that greater purpose of your vision, right? So you just wanna make sure that they're always relevant to that big picture vision that you have. They may also need to be relevant to some of the things that are going on right in front of you now. And then, of course, time-bound. Remember that example that I used when we were doing Vision, that JFK said, "We will, by the end of this decade, we will put a man on the moon and bring him safely back", okay? That's a great vision statement, it also happens to be a pretty good goal, alright? Because it's exactly what he wanted to do, and it was within 10 years that he wanted to do that, and you can certainly measure that. Okay? So time-bound. For today, I'm thinking that you want, you're gonna be choosing goals that are your ends, right? If it's a three-year plan, you wanna be choosing goals that you think are doable to achieve to get there within three years. Make sense? Everything else that you may need to do in order to get there becomes a strategy and an action step. They still may seem pretty broad, you'll understand as soon as you get into it, okay? Alright, so, yes?
A quick question.
Yep.
When does the three, when does the three-year begin?
Well, if you meet, if you meet the deadline that you said, it would be Labor Day, wouldn't it? Dawn, you had suggested May to have the first public presentation?
Right.
And then I think you had committed, of course, this is entirely up to you, but I think you had committed to having the thing done, the plan done, by Labor Day.
So three years, we're asking the group three years.
So are we thinking three days from, three years from Labor Day? Or less?
About right.
Okay, so that's Labor Day 21, 2021. Okay? Alright, let's get into your duos and trios if we could. Just swirl away, you know, back away from the table, grab some space. You are going to need.
Dawn, am I with you?
Are you Bonnie and Clyde?
Clyde.
Does it be out to three of us?
You're gonna need your Sharpie that's in the middle, and Matt, you're gonna need your.
I text my phone.
Jim, you're with.
Alright.
Yep, I'm gonna go, just looking for a Sharpie.
Yeah, grab a Sharpie.
You got a Sharpie.
Do you wanna use my table space?
I'll leave it up to Jim.
You can.
Where are we writing things down with the Sharpie?
Are we doing purple sprawl, we're starting with one.
Alright.
You two are together, or are you with three?
We're with three, yeah.
So to speak. I was drawing the house.
Well, we're gonna choose that. You put your Snickies, everyone's got their Snickies.
Alright, so I think we're jumping in with housing.
Okay, so let me just remind you how this works, in case you don't have that coming into memory from last May, alright? What you're gonna do, you can use these blue pads to scribble, but what you're gonna do is you're gonna brainstorm with each other, and we're gonna choose a goal first, the first one you wanna look at, I mean a priority first. And what you're gonna do is brainstorm, three, four, five, I don't care how many, alright? But your task is that at the end of your discussion, you're gonna reach consensus, okay? We're gonna start to build consensus already, so Bacon, Lettuce, and Tomato, you have to reach consensus on two goals, alright? Don't worry about SMARTing them now, okay? Just, we're gonna do that later, alright? Because that gets into wordsmithing, and you don't wanna do that, just know, have a basic idea of what the goal is, okay? That you all three agree on, we're gonna read them aloud later, we're gonna put them up on the flip charts, and then people are gonna sticker their favorites, alright? And that's how we'll prioritize, or compelling and doables, that's how we'll prioritize, okay? So scribble on the thing, use your Sharpie, please, because people are gonna have to go up there and read it, if you could just make this as legible as possible, alright? And we're gonna take it from there. See how that process works?
How long?
Okay? Uh, good to go?
Yeah, 15 minutes.
Yeah, I'm gonna give you 15 minutes at first and see how you do.
Do you wanna start here?
Chuck, you wanna set your.
Transports or.
Are we doing, yeah.
We'll start here.
Oh, sorry, sorry, guys, time out. My booth, you need to, you need to choose a priority that you're gonna work on. What do you think? Any practice around the room?
Presentation might be easier.
You can practice on something that you feel is not gonna be so complicated, that's a good way to practice.
That's what I'm thinking.
What do you think? You want transportation?
Yeah, housing, easy.
What are you saying, Rita?
Oh, no, I was just laughing because Jim said housing, and I just said housing, easy.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah.
Transportation. Transportation it is.
Okay. Alright, so we're starting with transportation, or are we brainstorming here?
I wrote down stuff for you to work.
So we can, so we're gonna brainstorm, we're gonna write everything down, and then we're gonna pick two, and put them here all nice and neat.
Sounds good. So mine was overall parking plan. Without quite public.
So, I don't know, how much more specific, but what I mean is, at least the way the board was commenting about parking, the system, and the goals of that are, at particular point, are to have more, generate. To the extent possible, try to keep residential access free from late-time parking. And increase public transportation. All of that, in my mind, is part of a overall parking plan. Specifically, I think it's mostly find, now to the downtown. But, ultimately, I think we need to look at.
Parking management system.
We need to, yeah, because we need to make sure we're maximizing the satellite places, and then we're managing them somehow, and that people know about them, and the rules are clear, how to be used.
With the parking lots.
It's still the two places that are, mostly when we say satellite, we mean Mid Island, right?
I would think that's one of the parking, because we're like, like a fire station.
I'm only gonna start this off, I'm just gonna separate these for now, but come on up and do the first one now. If you would, or Dawn, I'll let Dawn do the next one.
First one, implement traffic, parking, demand management, TDN. So we're saying, and that would have to do with on-street parking, that has to do with parking lots, that has to do with a garage or another garage, it's basically putting in place a philosophy that we're gonna value parking, and that we're going to measure it, and we're gonna have a committee that is in charge of this, and so that would, and that helps us, the same philosophy helps, goes into the, into the neighborhoods, and the neighbors have a place to park their car, you know, you can't have one under their cars.
So there may be numerous broad strategies also beneath this, but, and when you use that verb implement, first of all, so everyone knows the term he's using, TD?
TDN, which is basically demand management, is what we're talking about.
So at the end, what, what does it look like at the?
So implement, does implement.
At the end, we'll end the three years that we would be, we would have, we would probably have had one or two years of paid parking downtown, we would have maybe have priced some of the lots and changed it, we would have, you know, maybe changed the rules a little bit for the, you know, resident parking permits, you know, we would have had a, we would have had a, you know, the traffic group in play, you know, the parking group in place.
So this is, so lots of moving parts to that, obviously, it sounds like, but you both feel that implement there is a done deal, like, it's, it's, all of those moving parts are implemented.
At the end of three years, the program is in place and has had some adjustments.
Well, it's with its parts, but it is running, okay? At the end of three years.
Yes.
Okay, good? Sound okay? Alright, excellent. And Dawn, you wanna talk about this one?
Sure.
Thanks, Matt.
We started talking about like year-round bus service and bike paths and everything, but what we came down to as far as the broad goal was just to decrease auto-dependency. And, you know, sort of the idea is, how do we get to a point where not every adult in a household feels like they have to have cars? And there's multiple.
And multiple.
Of transportation that's playing into that, and cars are moving off, but that's the broad goal, to decrease.
And they will be SMART, that sound, that's, still, needs to be SMARTed, right? You all understand, okay? But that's the overall vision and goal.
We're not picking it apart, yet, right? We're just getting them all up there.
Exactly.
Just making sure.
Oh, come on, let's go. And my, and I, I wanted to say get people out of their cars, and she said that was a little too.
Yeah, how do you measure that, Matt?
Get people out of their cars, that isn't gonna work.
Okay, who's next?
We'll go.
You wanna go next? Okay, you can both come on up.
Three, we're back.
Jimmy, you letting him do all three?
He has subject matter.
Well, stated.
Well, we went more, I think, almost sitting on just kind of what they're saying too about the whole, but we went through three prongs of how we decrease autos, and we looked at pedestrians, bike paths, and then the vehicle, vehicle traffic downtown. And so overall, it might be part of decreasing autos when we look at it, but, but we also have security specific ones. I'll start with, we wanted to also implement a little more specific, though, downtown management, downtown parking management system based on demand management principles. And, like, so I might put that, put it to that.
Does everybody understand what that means?
What we're looking at is, and that kind of explained it a little more broadly, about like that could look at residential parking and parking lots and things like that. We were also talking in general about the actual parking downtown, there's sticker system, meters, you know, banning parking, whatever it may be. But it's out of that category of decreasing autos too, so it's, so we kind of, we kind of cross.
They're connected.
They're connected.
But this is more specific to.
A little more specific to what Matt presented.
Okay, so we'll put it over there.
I think, right.
Okay.
Second one we had was should they complete the income bike path, within three years, have they completed? And the third is, open the sidewalks from downtown to Mid Island, basically have a proper connection with all sidewalks, like a sidewalk management program from downtown, so we can create more walk, walking ability instead of the.
I like it.
And so, yeah, that should kind of go under less auto.
I think both of those two.
That was our intent, because I think there's a few things like that.
Yeah, so you definitely had the broad, and you were talking about that, is that we were maybe a little more narrow in our goals, but it definitely fits under less auto.
Yeah. That okay? You will, you will choose how to consolidate these and how you may eliminate them, but you see how this is forming out? You've set your big, almost, almost like a vision again, right, for that particular thing, and these become maybe, see, this is where it can become crazy-making, right? Because which is the goal that you wanna strive for? Those, because they're more specific, right? They sound like goals to guide you, but that's okay, you can still use this as your overarching, this is our major theme, our priority, this is the priority that relies by these kinds of ideas. I'm gonna let you all decide that. Thank you. Oh, does anybody have any questions about any of the terminology? Downtown parking management system based on demand management principle, I don't need to understand it, but you do.
I understand.
Okay, everyone, okay?
My only comment on that is, there's a big push for a sticker system that won't lead to demand management. And so, there's a big push down and now to just do sort of a little bit and forget about it again. And so I think that's why the demand management principles have to be in there.
Yep, and we'll, we'll capture those kinds of obstacles, right, which will drive expansion.
Stickers won't.
Yeah.
Nemo.
Alright.
It'll make a lot of.
Thank you. Thanks, Jim, let me, let's see what Bacon, Lettuce, and Tomato came up with.
We win.
So, we started talking about, a little bit about the demand management principles and overall parking plan improvements, and what we came up with that we thought would be an achievable goal is looking, really looking at what we're trying to do, and that's decreasing the number of cars in town. And so we said achieving maximum 85% utilization rate of parking in town. And I think that to me, or to us, I think the demand management was part of that, but we didn't wanna restrict ourselves, we kind of felt that we needed to really look at satellite parking and look at it comprehensively, how can we just reduce in our traffic in town? So I think that, you know, again, it's not that for all.
Do you see that as a separate goal, and you don't, in other words, let me just be clear, because people have to put their stars, would you prefer to leave that on its own as opposed to putting it in with this group, or you want it to stand alone?
I see, I see this as being part of that, but I'll leave it very close to the minute, because it has to be smart.
Okay. The other one we were looking at was how keep, how reduce the number of cars in town, and so we are pretty specific with establishing two direct commuter shuttles from Mid Island to town with at least 8% utilization in season, so, kind of building on the narrative of past program, really incentivizing employers to encourage alternative transportation principles in the summer. And I think, you know, again, this kind of fits into that achieving 85% utilization rate. It's there.
Everybody catch that? Last one?
Yeah.
And I think it, you know, goes, keeping, decreasing auto dependency, so that would be a good one for yous.
And again, so do you want, do you want them to look at this group as a, as a, maybe a stretch, part of this?
Yeah.
So this is looking overarching?
Yeah.
And this gets grouped over here?
Yeah.
But this might stand on its own?
It might stand on its own.
Or, or they, this is part of this.
Oh, okay.
Or one way to work towards that 85%.
Alright, I'm gonna let, I'll let them decide that, okay?
I'll make a plug, I think when you do interact, demand management, 85%, if you're doing it right, that's the number you're shooting for, and that's what you're adjusting your, that's what you're adjusting your policies and your prices and things to hit 85%.
And do you think, though, that the?
That's how they do it.
Eighty, the demand management on its own, I mean, does that, will achieve that 85%?
I think that, well, demand management is sort of, that's what they're trying to do for parking, they say we want one out of every eight spaces to be open at any one time, and you have to change your rules and your prices to have that happen, or you have to add the other things that you want to have that happen.
Yeah.
So, but I think it's really, I think we have to get the philosophy, whatever the group is, it's gonna be checking this on a monthly basis or a bi-weekly basis or whatever, we have to get, make sure that they're working on that theory, not on something else.
I think, I think the questions, we need to learn more about what demand management is before I can answer that. Like, as comments, I think they said things like 85% of that, everybody's based on demand management. That's all.
Jim, can you just pick up a little bit tighter here? Are you ready?
I'll get sure you are.
Excellent. Yeah, not for the mic, but for us down here, it's hard.
There's fans and stuff.
Yeah.
I think the eighty-five percent, everything that I've read about doing demand management says you also, you know, if you're gonna charge X amount of dollars at peak times, you have to also have alternatives that are cheaper or free, whether it's a shuttle service or a free parking or something. So it's not just eighty-five percent kind of expands into other things.
But here's where the philosophy will, will, will guide it though. Say you do, say you do a, you say, you push everybody in the parking lot out of town, we only have two hundred spaces to park them out of town. And let's say there's five hundred cars that want to go there every day, cause they can't park downtown anymore. We, we are different than the rest of us. We can't have, you know, this is, we don't, we don't have the space to have, uh, a bunch of, uh, like, lots, you know, outside of town, cause there's no land. So we really want to get them in, either don't get in the car at all, or get them in the bikes right outside the door, and the bus right outside the door. We can't, this whole idea of lots, we're, you know, we're adding two points on the cars, we're adding three to five hundred cars a year. They, they don't have enough space to put all the cars. So I think that's where the guiding principle becomes, you know, that we charge, we value parking, we charge for parking, and we use the money to do these other things. Anyway.
So do I understand what's happening here? The conversation is about, um, trying to isolate which is the, which is the overarching goal here? Is that what we're trying to do?
I forgot if our eighty-five percent is underneath there.
Is it part of, or is it overarching? You're making the case that, um, from what I, because this is what you're gonna have to decide here. You're making the case that the, that to have the overarching philosophy is the word you're using, right?
I think that's, that's what we have to, yes.
Might be equivalent to this one, the decrease auto dependency. All of these are achieving that.
Yes, and those are all probably achievable in three, under auto.
Okay, to group, to organize the ideas like that? Is that okay with everyone? So what we'll do is, what we'll do right now is remarkably aligned goals here. Guys, did you, have you been working on this?
We've been working together.
Yeah, last three days, that's all I've been doing.
Exactly. So let me see if we've organized these, and I don't think there are any dupes here. So you're very aligned, one has to do with, uh, TDM parking and the other to do with reducing auto dependency. Agreement that these are your two overarching? Philosophies, if you will? Okay. And that these, let me ask you this, both, um, since Dawn and Matt, you were the ones who came up with the overarching. When people come up and put their stars, if they're, if you already have consensus that these are your two overriding priorities, do you want, do you want to star these? In other words, as opposed to...
Don't be a contrarian and ask, why do we even need to vote? We've got the two goals for overarching, and those are things that come out from under them.
You don't need to vote if you think all of these things are doable within three years.
I mean, is that a way to vote? Look on, vote for, vote for the things that you think are doable.
That's what I'm asking you. Yeah, so in other words, this is not, um, this is, this is a big overarching philosophy. These are five very specific things, okay? If your goal is to have only two, right? And it may not be. If you all feel that all of these things are doable within three years, they are absolutely doable, then we don't need to do...
Right, they all get stars.
They all get stars.
So can we just ask that question? You go, you read them and nod and...
I can, I can start sticking it to you. All of them are sticking it.
That's environmental leadership.
So, want me to read them again?
Yes.
So achieve eighty-five percent utilization rate of parking in town.
Yep. Do we all nod, yes, or no?
Yeah. How many thinks that's doable in three years? How many do you think is doable in three years?
Yeah, I think it is.
You have one who does not.
No, I think...
Oh, you do, so you all do.
Yeah, I think so.
Can I make a comment? I only think it's doable if we do some of these other things.
Right.
So I can't really answer that.
You mean these other things?
Yeah.
Okay, so they're all connected?
Yeah. Well, I want to sort of hear them all again, but...
It's perfectly okay. It makes what you're doing even that more cohesive. I just want, what's important here at this juncture is, is it doable in three years?
So for example, if we all say yes to that first one, but then we say no to the sidewalks, we can go back and change our minds on the first one.
That's gonna require discussion.
Okay.
I don't, is there a difference between is it doable and we are going to do it?
Well, yeah. Hopefully, we're going to do it.
If they mean the same thing, then I want to carefully think about what is doable, cause we have a whole bunch of other stuff besides this that we're talking about. And...
You mean with those other priorities?
With those other priorities and with other day-to-day admin things.
Yeah, that's the question you have to ask yourself.
Yeah, and aren't we focusing on doable? And then, as, then, that's our rough draft plan, is we go through and decide what's doable, then we put it out to everyone else to say, you know, Mike Burns might come back and say, nope, not a chance. And then we revise it based on that. But I think right now, doable is...
Well, if that's the case, fine, then I would agree that's doable, based on what we want to do.
And we still haven't done data collection.
Right, right.
I guess the question is, does someone in this room know right now that that's not doable?
That's a good way to put it. If any, at this point, what you're weeding out is, if there's anybody sitting at the table who's thinking, there is no way, I'm looking with everything, there's no way we can do that in three years.
Based on what we have today.
I think, well, I'll, I'll, I'll answer partly. I think the in-town bike path, if remain is putting the money up and doing the, you know, sort of the, the, looking at all the different takings and planning that has to happen, if those takings are then prioritized, then I think it might be doable. If those takings take ten years, because we're doing other things, then it will never happen. So I think, you know, this is, I think what we're trying to do is make this a priority and say, you know, we want these handled in the planning office before all this other stuff.
That's the whole idea, so that you don't get derailed.
So we're just on the first, of the first...
So what I'm hearing is that there's agreement that all things, you know, cohesive, we can do this. All right? So this is a yes. Implement a downtown parking management system based on demand management principles.
Yes.
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 Complete the in-town bike path in three years. Complete it.
Yes.
If you're on it, writing.
It's doable.
You're cutting the ribbon.
It's doable.
I'm going to go home, but it's gonna, it's, we're gonna have to really push for that to happen.
But also, there's things beyond our control.
There's big houses in our way.
One very big problem, which is Marine Home Center.
Right away.
And I don't think that's happening, I just don't think that's gonna get worked out within three years.
Right now...
Everything else, I think, is doable, except that one person.
Just do it on the other side of the street.
Well, but here, but I think, if you say this is an absolute necessity, and this is, you know, as a board, or we use the bully pulpit and say, as a board, we all have a hundred percent agreement this has to be done, then I think we, we got a better chance on that happening in five years then.
I think five years is realistic. Okay, I'm gonna put a question mark here for now, okay? Just, you have to prioritize.
And can we modify, we go along, for example, complete in-town bike path up to Marine Center, up to Marine Home Center? I mean, I'm just, I can cheat, but...
Can modify that goal?
Could that be done within three years?
There's a design, I mean, it doesn't go from out of town, it doesn't mean candles, for example.
We didn't define, we didn't define Mid Island, maybe we can just say yes until we define Mid Island.
When you're smarting them, you can do that.
I would say yes now, and we'll let Smart out.
Okay.
Because, don't, don't forget...
So in other words, is this worthy of smarting?
Yes.
Okay, is that okay then?
Yes.
All right, so I will put a yes. It's worthy of smarting, and then you'll decide? Okay, good. Okay. Open sidewalks from downtown to Mid Island. Open sidewalks from downtown to Mid Island.
We do it?
I think it's doable, it's gonna take the focus, and there's gonna be a lot of money involved, or something like that, but yes.
Or, everybody feels doable?
Yes. Can I say something really quick? I'm just, I'm glad that there's something with pedestrians in here with transportation, I'm glad you came up with that.
They took a very thoughtful, three-pronged approach over there.
The article told you they were smarter than us.
We win.
Okay, and then this one is, establish two direct commuter shuttles from Mid Island to town with at least eighty percent utilization in season.
Yes.
Yes.
Where's the second one coming from?
The eighty percent part?
We, we can decide that in, in, smarting, is that okay?
It might be.
But is it smartable?
Absolutely.
Just different locations than Mid Island.
Absolutely.
Do you need to know the answer to that before you...
I think one is doable, but unless somebody has a, a location for a second lot in Mid Island, it's not doable.
Greg and Jim, can we have one conversation that is... Dawn is talking about why she's not so sure. Do you...
Two O G, the school, jetties, and then maybe there's something we haven't thought about.
Is it worth smarting? We're spending time, and then you can decide one or two?
Yeah, we might, we might take it off really quick.
All right.
That one's gonna take, that's gonna take some...
So, instead of coming up with two goals, you have five?
We have two, we have two, TDM and auto.
These are, um, overarching philosophies.
Right here.
What kind of bad fear are... Whatever, it's whatever you feel you can achieve. I just want to caution you, the whole reason you're doing this is because everything being thrown at you is a priority, right? So nothing is a priority. The whole reason we're doing this is to establish priorities. If you are okay with these two major priorities for transportation, certainly are. Or, or neither.
It's hard to measure the second level, it's easier to measure.
Right, these help you measure. Right, these are harder to smart because they're broad. That's the only reason we put them up there.
We want to, want to measure it.
And these are all ways that you know they're gonna get there, right?
We may have a reality check after we do the other two. In terms of, oh, wait a minute, maybe not.
True, and we can certainly do that on meeting three. We can shuffle them around.
Or after data and research as well.
At some point.
I want to add one. Consider, I mean, we're implementing year-round bus service this year. I think that it's going to require some tweaks to get it running smoothly and properly within three years. That was one of the things that we talked about under our broad, but we...
Is this a new, say it again, is this a new goal? Is this a new goal that you're talking about?
It's to sort of, um...
It's an existing initiative.
Well, we have an initiative, so why don't we just... Why don't we just say implement year-round bus service?
Starting in October.
Need to be tweaked.
Well, and I think the part of that what we haven't done so well is look at smart, so like you said, it's not started yet, but we've, it's out there, we're going to do it smarted, so that then in three years, we know what does that success look like.
Do you want to add that up here? Well, I think in terms of the decreasing auto dependency, we need to include, write that down, some, just write it on a pieces of the year-round bus service, and we probably need to relook at taxi and ride share policy. Okay. Just write that as an end, okay? And we'll throw it up here. Right now, I want six, cause I've got two to move.
A lot of those are...
Yeah, this is why goal setting is hard, right? This is why goal setting is hard. Is this the goal? Is this the goal? It's the same crazy-making thing as goals, objectives, strategies, action steps, right? But the good news is, is you're all very aligned. It's looking like you're getting already a very clear idea of what you want to do. Are those two different things?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, they're actually, it's not car vehicular transportation, I think. It's bus service tweaking and taxi-ride share. You want to separate those into two different things? Dawn, just make another sticky please that says taxi-ride share. And this goes over here?
It's under the auto.
Yeah.
Those are so specific, are they, maybe they're even more specific than a goal. They could be a tactic or something.
Yeah, could it be a strategy? Well, that's why I said it's so broad. Okay. I am gonna let you, okay. So, we're all right, we're good on time. Do you want to smart all of these? Or do you, do you want to take a prioritization, prioritization step in between?
If we're gonna take a prioritization step, then maybe we need to agree on the number. Cause if I knew that we were gonna limit to four, say, then it'd be easier for me to eliminate a couple.
You could, so for example, this is why it's hard, okay? What you want to ask yourself at this point is, does all of this absolutely need to happen in order to get here? And does all of it need to happen within three years?
And...
That's a question.
And which of them have the biggest impact on the...
You read my mind.
On the top.
My words that I use.
And I don't know that.
Right, which is your highest leverage goal? Which is your highest leverage goal to get to these two?
But I can't vote on that today.
You don't know that.
I don't know enough now.
Gotcha.
I would rely on, I don't know.
Okay, so you might not have the information to know that right now, right? What's your highest leverage goal?
Uh, that's just me, I don't know.
Oh, I don't know.
So would we hold them, like, until we've done the data research part?
I think you need to smart these, unless you can't.
Do you smart, I mean, is it something where you, we smart two in each or one, whatever it is? But, like, I could imagine sending these to, well, same Mike Burns, say, these are the goals that we've selected of, these are all the goals that we had in mind, we thought these would be the most achievable. And if he sees one that's not our top two, and he can say, actually, this one's gonna have more impact, and something like that, so we don't lose... Yeah. Yeah, so we don't lose the other slots.
It needs to come back and running, it has to build him running, come back and running, or it needs to be added meeting with him, work with people like this. I think what we should be thinking ourselves more is like the, you know, the board. We're the board of the town, and underneath us are these other guys doing it. Cause, you know, I give, I'm Olivia's, this is a one, we have to do it. But if we have to give clear direction of what has to happen in the next three years, you know, and hey, you know, we're not gonna look at some of these other things because we're doing that. I think that would help us. You know, cause I don't think we give clear directions sometimes.
Well, I think this is getting us there.
Hold on, I have, I have a suggestion.
I'm forcing, oh, I'm sorry, Kayla. I'm forcing you. You know why? Here's why. But here's the thought. So I'm following, I'm following, I'm following the logic of what you're saying, okay? I'm also following the fact that there are some, that you may just not know is your highest leverage goal. Today, the purpose of today is not only to identify your goal, but to practice the smarting piece, okay? So, wherever, for example, these two things end up, I think it's a, I think it's a useful exercise for you to take a look at, because you've got consensus here, you could, and you could take this approach and say, okay, you have two priorities right up here, okay? Which are the ones that you think are your highest leverage goals at this point? And would be worth, that would be most valuable to smart, today.
It's not written in stone, right, today?
No.
But it's what we know now.
And also, remember in the vision exercise, you had tons of stuff that didn't necessarily fall into housing, right? Nothing goes away. So you've all, obviously, you, you have a lot of consensus here about these things. I'm just suggesting that for purposes of process today, use your stars to choose, okay, I think these, I think these two would be most valuable to smart and probably high-leverage goals to get to these two things. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
All right, I'm gonna let you do that before we have lunch.
It really helps me think of...
All right? So everyone's got two stars. One star per... Yeah, they can both be on the same, you want, put the, put the two stars wherever you want them to be. All right, does that make sense?
Yeah.
So, ten big people, I guess they die.
Where is this from today? Oh, wow.
Ten really big people.
Where's this from?
There's like...
We're so far ahead of time. This is great. I think we can do all three of them.
And then half is, um, half, we need half is vegetarian, I'm not sure which half is...
They might actually be better at this contest.
Thank you so much.
Looks like a cool lunch. Enjoy. Okay, has everyone voted?
Yes.
I need to use that word vote, but it's kind of a cover. All right. So here are the ones that have the most. All right, here are the top two. See how you feel about these. And the idea would be, here's what we're doing, all of this stays, all of this is in your green pan, and it does not go away. Because there probably are gonna be strategies, right? But what you seem to, what has gotten the most energy is open sidewalks from downtown...